Yeah. Facilities and finance, okay, I'm gonna say it off the top of my head. Facilities and finance, so.
That's what it is.
Facilities.
Folding on me.
All right. Are we, uh, we're live, and it's, okay, it's five o'clock. We're going to open up the August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five Facilities and Finance Committee Work Session. Uh, first order of business, well, before I start, let me just say we do not have a chair of this committee.
As of yet.
As of yet, that is item, uh, four point one. Uh, but until then, if my colleagues would indulge me to act as an interim chair.
Yes.
Uh, as Chair Emeritus wants here, um, and then we'll get to the, uh, election of chair. But, um, let's start then, we've completed item one, let's go to item two, item two point one is the public comment. We have a few members in the public who've signed up to speak. Uh, Karen, please be so kind as to call their names and just ask them to come if you, when we call your name, uh, please give us grace if we mispronounce, if you could come to the front of the room, there is a microphone there. Uh, if you can speak into the microphone so that your voice can be heard by those watching at home and recorded on YouTube. Uh, recording for the record, that would be great, and we have, uh, three minutes per person, and Tricia will be running the timer. So Karen, please.
Okay, and if I do print, um, pronounce your name incorrectly, as Garrick has said, I do apologize, and please, when you come down here, introduce yourself to make any corrections whatsoever. Leanne, you?
Please.
All right, hopefully it's not counted in the three minutes yet, um, my last name is pronounced Ju. Yeah, uh, but thank you for the opportunity and good afternoon. Um, I would like to discuss three areas of concern today. Um, one transparency and equity, two math sequences as core curriculum, and three mental, social, and emotional support for our students. Before I elaborate, please get to know me, my name is Leanne Ju, mom of a rising sophomore at IHS. I also volunteer my time with the IHS PTA, uh, which is allowing me to connect with families of varying grade levels. Um, it was through the grapevine of this network that I stumbled upon the finding that AP Calculus BC is reduced to one class section and that most juniors and all sophomore and freshman levels will be denied a seat in this course this fall. Um, I follow school and district communications diligently, but heard none from the official channels. Hence, the first concern, transparency, um, it is a basic right of guardians to be informed about curriculum failure like this. A core class should be available to everyone who signed up and made plans with their counselor to take it. My second point is about math. Um, the IHS math department lists AP Calculus BC as part of the core courses, courses sequence. It is foundational and should be provided and supported for all students who successfully completed pre-calc and are educationally ready, no matter what grade level they are. If a section is full, another section must be made available. Successful math learning is continuous, as we all know. Calculus also serves as pre or co, uh, requisite to other core sciences such as AP Physics. Um, what IHS is doing now stalls progress for dozens of brilliant students who will face multiple shut doors due to having to wait one, two, or even three years before taking their next math in sequence. Curriculum meeting, I know, is next Tuesday, but you need to know now, so we can resolve this before it's too late. I hope you sense my frustration, and I'm only the parent. Students who are experiencing this firsthandly probably are feeling very confused, panicked, and they're lacking the clear direction from their trusted learning partners. Students are at a loss about their future as their past was carved out long time ago and guaranteed for them, um, from the school. Any form of lottery system creates winners and losers unnecessarily so, which is extremely harmful and damaging to student morale and precious friendship. So I hope a new school year can be started with refreshed excitement and new challenges. I'm eager to work with you all to examine how we can add sufficient sections or seats to admit everyone who is due to take AP, um, calculus this fall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cornelia Yi.
Hello, my name is Cornelia Yi, and I'm currently a junior at Ithaca High School. Um, I really love my class, and I love this community, which is why I'm coming here today to discuss an issue that our class is currently facing. Earlier this month, many of us in the class of two thousand twenty-seven learned that juniors might not be able to take AP Calculus BC because the number of seats in the class had been reduced. This was surprising and also disappointing, since for many years, the vast majority of juniors who have wanted to take this course have been able to do so. With fewer seats available, it feels like my class has been unintentionally left behind. Um, and I understand that, uh, our district faces many constraints and challenges, so. Before I continue, I actually wanted to thank a few people. Um, the administration at IHS has actually been so open and willing to listen to us, um, even in the middle of the summer. So I truly appreciate, um, our principal, associate principals, and department leaders who, um, have been giving their time and answering our questions and also working hard to help us navigate this challenge. Um, I also wanted to take this time to recognize my classmates. This issue runs very deep for our class, but I'm so proud of the way the class of two thousand twenty-seven has handled it, um, with patience, empathy, and a lot of grace. Um, for the past two years, my class has faced very similar challenges. As freshmen and sophomores, many of us wanted to take AP Statistics, but seats were reserved for upperclassmen. Last year, we had hoped to test into AP Chemistry, and only a handful of us could get in because the two sections of the class had been reduced to one section. Each time, our class showed understanding and accepted that older students needed those opportunities first. Even though, when they were our age, they had the opportunities to take these classes without facing any barriers. But now, we are upperclassmen ourselves, and we had hoped that our chance would come, and instead, we are once again being asked to step aside. I know my classmates well, and I can see that frustration is building, and I'm worried that this disappointment may fester into resentment or discouragement. More than anything, I want our class to continue lifting each other up rather than competing against one another for limited spots in a class. I want us to stay collaborators, not competitors. That is why I believe it is so important that we reduce, we, we restore the second section of AP Calculus BC. Doing so would continue the long tradition of excellence at IHS and show students that their hard work and preparation are valued. It's not too late to make this right, and looking ahead, I hope that students, administrators, and district officials can work together to find lasting solutions, whether that means adding more sections, increasing class sizes, or finding new ways to meet demands, so that every student who is ready and eager can take a class that taps their potential. An upperclassman and underclassman can take classes side by side. This may seem like a small scheduling issue, but it carries a much bigger meaning for us. Protecting opportunities like these helps preserve the trust, motivation, and sense of fairness that makes our school such a special place. I know that by working together, we can ensure that every student at IHS, not just this class, but the ones to come, has the chance to grow, to learn, and to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Nina Cone?
Thank you, um, my name is Nina Cone, and my son is an incoming ninth grader at the high school. Um, yesterday, fun fact, we learned that he would not be able to take a Calc BC because a friend told him there weren't enough spots. Another parent then reached out to me and confirmed this information later in the day. I am really deeply troubled that the school has apparently decided, without notifying affected students and parents, to allow only some of the students who qualified for Calc BC and who registered for it last spring to actually enroll in it. And that's really inconsistent with two goals I've heard school board members articulate in their campaigns, right? Striving for excellence and equity. You know that math classes occur in a standard progression, each one builds on the next. Students and teachers expect that if a student successfully completes the course, they will take the next one. And that's what IHS's handbook states, and I brought copies in case you want them. Um, but apparently, the plan is not to keep that promise to all students. It's to penalize students who excelled early, leaving them out in the cold at the last minute. Rumor has it, and again, I haven't heard anything from the school, that students are going to be told that they should just, like, look in the course catalog and choose, I don't know what, like, something? Um, that's not excellence, that's not equity, and there's really no excuse. It's entirely predictable that the school would need multiple sections of this class. Students marched through in progression, um, because that is the educationally appropriate path according to the high school. Um, and they registered many months ago. Unfortunately, this is really part of a larger problem that I've seen way too much of already. When my son was in first grade, uh, my son's principal asked us to consider accelerating him in math because he was struggling socially and academically in the classroom. We worked with the principal and with my son's teachers to come up with a plan. But in each of the past five years, the district has created bizarre roadblocks to that plan. Twice, it attempted to deny my son the ability to speak, sit for the regions, even though it was legally required to do so. Twice, it enrolled him in a course that was several years behind the one he had just successfully finished without notifying us, and like this year, I had to scramble in the days before classes started to try to sort things out. At this point, it doesn't feel just like a coincidence. It feels like a deliberate and systematic disregard for students in our district who happen to learn a bit differently. So my ask is really quite simple. All children should be allowed to proceed in the standard sequence as promised and as instructed. They should not be disadvantaged or discriminated against because the way that they learn results in them advancing a little more quickly. You need to reinstate the class. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sadie Hayes?
Sorry. Hi, I'm Sadie Hayes, um, I've had kids at, uh, BJM, Fall Creek, Boynton, and now IHS. And, um, I'm here today at Office Hours to talk about a math problem, and, um, the question goes like this. How many rising sophomores who took algebra last year are being denied entry to geometry? How many who took geometry last year are told that they can enter a lottery for Algebra II? And how many who took Algebra II and want to continue on to pre-calc have been told, well, they're just gonna have to find something else? If the answer to any of those three questions is zero, then the answer to this one should also be zero. How many students who took pre-calc are being told they can't go to Calculus BC? From my understanding, the answer to that is at least three, if not at least a dozen. There is not space, there is a lottery for juniors, and you can find an alternative as what the ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders are being told. And I find that unacceptable, this is a course class, this is part of the sequence. It's pretty clear-cut, the students in pre-calculus BC, it's quantifiable, it's known. The number of students looking to advance into calculus BC is clear in the spring. So we have had time to sort this out, we've been able to decipher well in advance how many people and how many seats are needed. We shouldn't be at this point, at this time in the year, wondering and scrambling how we're gonna do this, and it shouldn't be on the shoulders of students to work out a problem that's essentially, it's a finance issue, right? It's a funding issue. How do we make sure that people are given the seats that they need to based on what they've matriculated into? The students have every right to expect having faithfully carried out their end, which is to perform according to the requirements set to them, that the school board and the high school will carry out their program of studies faithfully. And I have to say that I'm skeptical anytime an administrator tells me that it's just not feasible in the budget. I come from New Mexico, which is second only to Mississippi in childhood poverty, and I grew up on the income of one of my parents who was a public school teacher. And we have in the Southwest what I call succulent mentality, it's basically like living like a cactus, right? You don't know what you're gonna get, and when you get what you need, you make as much use of it as you can, and often, we do it beautifully in the Southwest. And when Jacob Schifrin was a candidate, and he said that, um, we have funding in this district that's commensurate with other districts, but somehow other districts manage to use theirs better, that really resonated with me, right? Like, why can't we use what we have in a way that gives people what they need? So that is why I'm talking about this tonight in the finance meeting, because it is a finance issue. We need to finance the teachers and retain them to ensure that our students are getting what, according to the program of studies, they're entitled to receive. So thank you for your time, appreciate you being here and listening.
Thank you. Orin Milder?
Hello, I'm Orin Milder. Yesterday, I went to my first cross-country practice of the season, where my teammate gave me big news. He told me I won't be able to take calculus next year. Because even though I did well in pre-calc and signed up for calculus in January, I'm only a ninth grader. You can imagine how surprised and disappointed I was. My teachers and I have been planning for me to take calculus as a freshman for many years. Registered for it last January, and I've looked forward to it. And here I was, learning about this, not from a school, but from a friend, only two weeks before school. Math has been an important part of my life. In first grade, I would annoy my friends by insisting they write me math problems during choice time. That's when my teacher recommended that I try a more advanced math program. Before I started advanced math, I didn't want to go to school. Now, I enjoy school, and I love math, especially using it to model real-life scenarios. For example, I find it interesting how trigonometric functions can model tides. If I'm not able to continue along my path, I would be missing an important part of my identity. Math is about continuity. If I can't take calculus next year, not only will I have to wait another year, or two or three, but I will lose the foundation which I've worked so hard for, I'd have to start some of my learning all over again. Because of that, I would be a significant disadvantage compared to students who are not forced to wait. Thank you for your time, and please let me take calculus next year.
Orin, if I could ask you to pronounce your last name again, because I didn't hear clearly.
Milder, that's spicy.
Okay. Thank you. Robert, oh, yeah, we have two more names, Robert Kleinberg?
Good afternoon, my name is Bobby Kleinberg. My daughter Julia is one of the juniors at IHS who was planning on taking AP Calculus BC this year, until she learned that the course only had space for seniors. I came here not to scold or accuse anybody, but just to state how this affects my daughter and her peers, and to seek a better understanding of the constraints and possible options for these students. I come from a family of math educators. My grandfather was a high school math teacher in New York City. My father taught math at the University of Buffalo. I hold a PhD in math from MIT, and I teach in the Computer Science Department here at Cornell. Before the pandemic, I organized Girls Adventures in Math, an annual event that brought together elementary and middle school girls from around the region. Those events gave my daughter and many other girls an early taste of teaming up with peers to tackle exciting math challenges. She has continued to seek out those opportunities. The most recent phase of her math journey began in ninth grade when she was admitted into Algebra II. In an essay she wrote for a teacher last year, she beautifully describes how the class rekindled a love of learning that had diminished during the preceding years of classes that, uh, felt unchallenging to her. She writes, "At last, I struggled. At last, it was the course that was exciting me, not the goals I set for myself on the side. At last, I had to work for it. And I wasn't the best in the class, not by far, but I was the happiest that a school-assigned math course had ever made me." Julia wants to continue that struggle and challenge. It's the continuation and the culmination of a multi-year journey that has required a great deal of work and initiative on her part. And over the years of that journey, she's become part of a community of peers struggling together. She wants to remain a part of that cohort, most of whom are seniors now moving on to AP Calculus BC. As a mathematician, I never treat a question as resolved until there is a proof that the answer must be yes or that it must be no. In that sense, the question of whether my daughter and her peers can enroll in the calculus course they desire seems unresolved to me. I have not learned the assumptions or the logic underlying the high school's decision to make only one section of calculus BC available this year, nor have I learned why the circumstances this year are different from the ones that prevailed in previous years when there was enough space for juniors. In the absence of answers to these questions, I still hold out hope that a different decision might be reached and that my remarks today might help bring this about. In closing, I want to say that in my eighteen years of living in Ithaca, I've often cited the high quality of our school system when encouraging others to move here. This year, for the first time ever, I heard a friend mention the school system as one of the reasons why they're moving away. It is imperative that we find ways for students who want to soar ever higher in their learning to reach the heights they're capable of. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy Brown or Braun?
Good evening, I'm Nancy Braun, I teach kindergarten at Caroline Elementary, and I'm here to share my experiences, um, providing a properly furnished classroom at the elementary. Um, so this is tied to facilities and also finance. I learned from one of my colleagues in the ITA, an occupational therapist, um, when she came to, uh, help me with a student, that the tables were about four inches too high for kindergartners to be able to write without hiking up their shoulders and elbows. Um, and that set in motion the search for, um, proper height tables for kindergartners to have an ergonomic seating to learn, to read and write. It involved working with the custodian to try to lower tables that were probably dating to nineteen fifty-eight, when the building was constructed. Um, I did go out to the rented storage trailers, the one that we got during the pandemic, to put excess furniture in so that we could do social distancing with our tables. Uh, we dug through the storage trailers to try to find tables. Um, eventually, we determined that there were none. Um, it was put on me to actually do the shopping in, on the school's supply website to try to, like, find the tables that would fit the classroom and the specifications I had learned from the OT. Um, and eventually, um, put that, uh, give that information to the school secretary to, uh, create the order. Eventually, uh, I did get the tables, which is fantastic, and the kids loved them. Um, it was a lot of work, um, and my contract states that the administration will provide a properly furnished room, but that was a lot of legwork that kind of fell on me. Um, but one other thing came out of that process, which is that, um, I had transferred to Caroline to replace a retiring teacher in two thousand twenty-one. So I had never seen the furnishings that were put into our storage trailers. Um, and my name wasn't on any of that furniture as, you know, returned to Nancy Braun when we go back to regular furnishings. And in the interim, you know, I just did what I could to, I never knew anything existed. I was going up to my attic and getting my children's hand-me-down shelves to create, um, the kind of, uh, divided activity learning areas for my students, um, a library corner, um, you know, shelves that they can be independent in accessing and, uh, returning toys and materials to. Um, so when I got to see inside the trailer, I saw that my kindergarten section, actually, those furnishings were there, they had been there. Um, I was thrilled, but it was the middle of the year, um, I wasn't about to, like, spend a weekend trying to swap out furniture. Um, I also had a very small classroom, so I really couldn't, um, make any new accommodations. So I did let my principal know early this winter that my plan was to take back my own furniture, move into a bigger space this fall, um, and to get that furniture back. And when I let her know that, um, I learned that the trailers were gone, and I was instructed to find out what had happened to the furniture, where was it? Um, it was, I was hoping it was put into a spare room in the building, but, um, after, uh, chasing down all the people, all the way up to the head of facilities, I learned that it had been disposed of.
And if you would be able to wrap it up.
Okay, um, I want to know, I was told that it was disposed of because it was broken and not usable. Um, as a taxpayer and as a teacher who wanted and was planning to use that furniture, I would like to know, if it was all broken, why did we pay to have it stored for four years? And what was the cost? Um, and when can I reasonably expect that the district will furnish my classroom so that I can take my furniture back home and maybe give it to my children to set up their own apartments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, is anyone else on the list?
No, that is it.
Okay, so, um, thank you to the public for coming, and I especially want to thank the students who come and spoke so eloquently. Uh, it's your school, your school district, so thank you for coming and having your voice heard. Uh, committee response, um, the two issues, the, the furniture issue and the math issue, um, I think I can say, and I don't want to speak in my golly's, uh, there has been no discussion about financial constraints limiting math choice that I'm aware of. Certainly, it has not been in this committee. Um, so I don't, I don't think the financial constraints, at least to my knowledge, uh, is at play with respect to math selection. At least, no issues come before this committee. Uh, having said that, I, I think maybe, uh, Dr. Brown perhaps could, uh, address this issue a little bit, you know?
Of course, thanks for the invitation to share some thoughts, and a special thank you to all the folks who came out to share your engagement, um, on this topic. And, and let me note, I, I'm not, uh, Karen Arnold, and I'm not the high school principal who I've just been texting with over here. Um, I had the privilege of walking over with a caregiver and not knowing what the conversation was gonna be about as far as public comment. I recalled the last fifteen summers where during August and September, we're having conversations about scheduling and master schedules at the high school. This is the time of year where our counselors and our administrators are attempting to, uh, rectify conflicts. And what's happened is the schedule was turned over to our counselors about two weeks ago is what I'm learning. And yes, this is a year where we had forty, not to be identifiable, but forty-one students who signed up for calculus in one section. So this is the time of year where we figure out what to do next. Do we offer us another section, a new section, an additional section? Do we create a larger classroom, which is like the one we built here, where we can have more students in that class? This is the time of year where we try to figure out how we can accommodate, this is a great challenge to have, I don't want to say a problem, this is a good challenge to have, that many young people signing up for this course, and we will accommodate that need. And if, I know it's hard to say, trust us or to be patient, it always works out, all right? And I've been at this table where each year, there is a course, I didn't know it was gonna be AP Calculus this year, but every year, there's a course that we have a significant number of young people who sign up, even during the summer, where we have to figure out at this time of year how to fix that before school starts. And that is our effort that's taking place right now. This is not to, uh, counter what was said here, this is not a financial issue. This is a logistical issue and how to do it right. And having been around high schools a long time, there will be some conflicts that we cannot resolve. I know of one student, not to be identifiable, again, that has asked to take six or seven AP courses this year, and some of those are gonna be offered at the same time, and there are gonna need to be some tough decisions made, all right? And that's a, hard to say, but I need to say, you're gonna have to make some tough decisions, all right? But when we, where there aren't those kind of conflicts that cannot be resolved, and we've had, I'm looking at some folks who've had to choose orchestra, for example, over an AP course that they really wanted to take. Those are tough decisions, good challenges to have, but some decisions that are gonna have to take place for some families. But this is not about whether or not we're gonna offer another section or not having the space. We're gonna work on that over, I'm asking for your patience, but recognizing your frustration. And I'm speaking as a person who's sat here for fifteen years, having to navigate this each year, and it always works out like it should. And if you have questions, call me or Ms. Arnold, and we will talk you through this, counsel, or do whatever we can to accommodate needs, including some innovative approaches to offering it if you can't fit it into your schedule, which we've done in the past too. Call us if you have questions, all right? The board is not gonna solve this issue, we will for you. Thank you for the opportunity.
And, and I'd like to ask Dr. Brown, has there been a situation, um, due to financial constraints where, um, I know at one point, I know at one point, if the class size is less than a certain amount of students, that unfortunately, we may not be able to accommodate a request like that?
And that's been something we've been talking about for over a decade. When we do not have a class that will have at least fifteen students, and we have chosen now to be tighter on not offering that course. So I can, yes, that's connected to finances because it's probably not financially appropriate or efficient to do that. So we have been talking about that, but that has been in place for years. That's not the situation right now. When we have more than fifteen, we're doing everything we can to offer it in our schools.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Yeah.
The other issue that was raised was furniture, and Dan, I'm just reading eye contact, but I, yeah, I, tell me if I read wrong, but I, just trying to read your face, I thought you might have some, some insight on that you could share, but if not, I don't want to call you out. Dan Bryman?
Dan Bryman, I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Operations. Thank you for sharing that. I'm happy to investigate what happened there and work with Nancy to figure out what happened. I can say that a lot of the furniture that we put into the trailers was during COVID, when we had it, when we had certain space requirements in our buildings, and to, we moved out a lot of furniture to accommodate those spacing requirements. But I'd be happy to investigate what happened. Also, I'm sorry you had to order your furniture. We do have some systems in place, and I can talk to you about, you know, I'm sorry that happened, and we can figure out how we can make sure you don't have to order your furniture again like that. So my apologies. All right? Thanks.
I could just add that every month, the board has a surplus property report, and we try to flag those things to make sure that the district is not disposing of property that could be repurposed, reused, recycled. We try to be as diligent as we can about that, and we have that discussion every month. But I don't have the answers to the Caroline kindergarten furniture today, but we can try to get that to you.
Yeah, I'd be happy to investigate or report back to Nancy, and then if she likes to follow up, I can provide some.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone. So we're now going to move on to item three, approval of the minutes. We have minutes from facilities and from finance. I was not a member of the facilities committee last year, so I cannot just sit in approval, but those who were?
Right, and I was here. So Todd, do you want to say you're approving the minutes too?
Yeah, I mean, I read through them and, you know.
All right, so you approve the minutes for facilities?
Okay, I was present for the June twelfth finance work session, and I, because I approve those minutes if my colleagues agree.
Yep, I'm in agreement.
So we have agreement there. Okay, that takes us to item four, election of a chairperson. Just a reminder, we, last year, we had a separate facilities committee and a separate finance committee. This year, because the composition of those two committees are the same three individuals, we thought, why not be individual and, not, why not be efficient and combine them? So that is what we agreed to do at the last general meeting. And then I think that brings us to the issue of whether we can also combine the chairs. We had discussion of that, and we seemed to agree on that. So we are now looking for nomination for a chair of the combined facilities and finance committee?
I nominate Garrett to be chair of the combined facilities and finance committee.
Neither of them have seconded, okay. I won't third it, but I guess we can, we can vote on that. So is there agreement on that issue? All those in favor, all right? So you have a chair of your facilities and finance committee, which is, brings us to the capital project timeline and scope presentation. Do we have Tetra Tech here? So if we could ask folks to come down and introduce themselves and present to the committee and to our visitors, the capital project timeline and scope.
Don't mean to introduce myself again, but I'm Dan Bryman. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Operations. And with me is Chris Globitz, our lead architect from Tetra Tech. And we're excited to present the capital project timeline and scope presentation. Go ahead, Chris.
Thanks, Dan. And thank you, newly combined finance and facilities committee. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about the capital project, and we'll get into it now. Where do we point it? Up that way?
Yeah, yeah. Look to my computer.
Well, there's only like three slides, so if we have to do it by hand, it's not, it's not too big a deal. So as we work on getting the first slide, I'll just start in and provide a little context for this particular conversation, which is, as many of you are aware, that we have been having this conversation, you know, in planning and discussing the finer points of a capital project over, you know, many months. We are here to follow up on the recent OACM meeting, Owner Architect Construction Manager meeting, which is a monthly meeting at which we, you know, get into a lot more of the details around capital project planning. And to follow that up with a presentation tonight, seeking, you know, confirmation that it is the board's intent to move forward with a capital project, as we've talked about it. And I can go through some of the details and talk about it in as much, as much detail as you'd like. And to review some of the points about next steps, if, if you're comfortable moving forward with that. Okay, that's, that's overview. All right, so I'm going to go from memory here. So we have had a number of facility committee meetings and other meetings to discuss this. If, I guess I'll ask the first question is, based on your understanding, we can, we can go through it later, is it, is it the intent generally to move forward with bringing a capital project to the voters? We can go through the scheduled dates, the tentatively, we've suggested December ninth as a vote date, backing up a minimum forty-five days, which is New York State law, at which point on September twenty-third, I believe, is the identified ideal board meeting date at which to adopt resolutions. So there's some, you know, just some steps that, that need to happen. And then between now and then, thank you. Between now and then, we have about a month in which to organize some of your other consultants in order to get those things in place. So that's a high level of the schedule. So I just wanted to see if, if, if that makes sense so far to this group.
I think that makes sense.
Yes, yeah, that's the intent of the board, knowing that the, we did state that the, within the last quarter of this year, that we would go to the voters with a capital project.
Okay. Yeah, so, so does that schedule meet with your approval to the extent that we should continue to move forward with organizing your other consultants? So to drill down a little bit on that, I'm sorry.
Well, that schedule meets with our recommendation to the whole board. As a committee, we can't vote on that, but we would recommend to the board, as well as have a presentation of what we're going to recommend to the whole board starting next week.
Okay, yeah. Shall we talk about that schedule, or you want to let me know when, if there, if there's another presentation with the full board that, that we need to do before we move forward with that?
I would say we, we should present to the full board next week.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, but you.
Great, girl.
Please go through it.
Okay, so we have a schedule. That we've, yes, that we've, we've talked about, and I'm hoping to confirm the scope at least. And, and thank you for that, that feedback, that, you know, this sort of moving through the process and seeking full board approval for that. The next step would be coordinating with, between Tetra Tech, your AE firm, campus construction management, who are your construction managers, who advise us on cost estimating and construction feasibility of projects, as well as your, your financial advisor. So Ben Maslona from Fiscal Advisors has been in, you know, in this venue and other venues to talk about the financial side of things. Also, we engage your bond counsel, which is Douglas Goodfriend from OREC, as well as your lawyers, Kate Reed and Greg McDonald from BSNK. So we get that group together, we describe the project, you know, there are a couple of different pieces that those will help, that group will help you put in place, anticipating the September twenty-third action by the board to get those, you know, some of those legal notifications and things in place. So any, I'll, I'll talk also about communications. So again, once we get confirmation from the full board, we'll start a conversation about how we go about communicating the capital project scope, the details, you know, when and where to vote, you know, a lot of practicalities about that so that the, the public understands, you know, the, the intent of the capital project and what's included in it.
That looks good to me, and I've been looking to my colleagues, but that seems like something I would like to recommend to the full board.
Great.
Yes.
Yeah, next week.
Great.
Yeah.
Thanks. This is a scope document, which, you know, includes the, the items that we've talked about over a number of, of meetings. And I'm happy to go through it if you'd like. It is in, you know, in its content, should be familiar. So I guess I'll just open it up if you have particular questions.
So you will, or I won't, will not?
I'm happy to go through it in detail if you would like. Great. All right, we'll take it line by line. So roofing. We've identified Boynton, DeWitt, and Caroline as roofs that are currently out of warranty. And, you know, we're recommending for replacement of those roof membranes. In terms of the science rooms, so there are renovations planned for nine science rooms. Those are at Boynton and DeWitt. Three of them are at Boynton and six of them are at DeWitt, at those middle schools. The fire alarms, that's at Ithaca High School in South Hill. Those are the two buildings that currently include two fire, two kind of somewhat independent fire alarm systems. And sometimes they don't play nice with one another. We've seen some instructional disruption from fire alarms at Ithaca High School in particular. Some of that may have been in conjunction with construction activities, but they're older analog systems in those two buildings. The next HVAC line is the geothermal system that we've, we've had a number of conversations about that would provide Boynton Middle School and Ithaca High School with a source for cooling in response to the lake source cooling capacity, you know, changing. Then we have the charging infrastructure at the transportation center, who we've talked about that for some time. That supports the ongoing plan for school bus electrification. The HVAC controls, so these are the, sort of the brains that tell the equipment what to do and when and how much. And there are a couple of buildings that have been identified. Partially, that's just from age of system and efficiency that can be gained by that. And so those are Bell Sherman, Keighley Heights, and BJM. Abatement, this is primarily flooring, and Ithaca High School and Caroline have been identified and talked about with regard to sort of the highest need of just staying ahead of, of flooring materials that are starting to degrade. Wellness, so these are your nursing suites, right? So many of them are not in compliance with the, the ADA code. That's the Americans with Disabilities Act. Ithaca High School was recently done in phase one of the last capital project, so that, that facility is up to date. But we've identified that basically all the other, other schools could benefit from some renovations. BJM in particular has a structural issue with the slab that we've talked about, so that one is in there as well. Well, I skipped around a little bit, sorry. Playground areas. So we've talked about a few different playgrounds. So I want to take this opportunity to kind of frame the, the costs and the budgets that we're assigning to these. So these are budget allocations that, in some cases, have more specifics than others. So like roofing, we have a number of square feet, and we have a dollar per square foot. It's pretty straightforward, right? Others, like, like playgrounds and like bathrooms, where we've had a lot of discussions about some specifics. We also want to be sure that we have a budget that could handle those with some flexibility, right? So we're establishing budgets for a couple of these areas. Athletics, that includes the Boynton Middle School floor. There have been some water issues in there, so refinishing that floor and doing a little bit of the work outside to prevent some of that water intrusion. Also, the Ithaca High School Bliss Gym, the bleachers that we've, that we've talked about, just, just aging out. Keighley Heights paving, again, your facilities department has done a great job of keeping, you know, a lot of district facilities in, in, in order, or having them limp along to really get the full useful life out of them. If you go to Keighley Heights, you'll see some, some clear pavement failures up there that this would address. HVAC controls, I'm sorry, I talked about that earlier with the, with Bell Sherman, Keighley Heights, and BJM systems and bathrooms, similarly, we've, we've talked about district-wide, many bathrooms, and some more specifically than others, some more urgently than others. We have some plans to try to address some of the most critical needs in the shorter term. But we know that there are many more needs just to upgrade bathrooms that are coming behind that. So I wanted to keep a, keep a budget allocation in to be able to take care of some of those. So with those, with those budgets, the total of that just added up is forty-three point nine million dollars as a total referendum cost. And what that means is seeking approval from the public to authorize the school district to spend that much money. So that gives you bonding capacity. School districts in New York State are, have municipal ponds, municipal bonds available to them at, at pretty low interest rates for the market. That's typically how school districts fund capital projects, and then you get aid back from the state of New York for eligible expenses. So that's a, that's a quick overview. If you have some more specific questions, happy to entertain those.
No, I, I, I mean, looking to my colleagues, but I think, unless there's disagreement, these are items, capital improvements, that I think we could eagerly recommend to the full board to put forward for the voters. And I just remind everyone that that referendum is authorizing the board to receive a line of credit. There's still discussions about the actual spending on these items. But yeah, we, I think at least, unless there's disagreement, I think this, this committee would, would like to see us move forward with an ask to the public for these improvements.
Just aesthetic. HVAC is there twice. I know you noted that, and so those two amounts will be combined.
Yes.
And then just for the public to know, if you, you saw the categories, it might not, I'm not sure if it's up or not, but it's under all of these items that we've been in discussion about for several months now. It's under facility improvements, health and wellness, and sustainability. And we always try to specify to the community when we're going out for referendum capital project that what areas we're addressing as a school district.
And I just also want to emphasize, there, there is a state rebate of kind on these things, which is, right, is it fifty-eight? You know, about fifty-eight percent of the cost. Roughly fifty-eight, sixty, somewhere that amount of that money will come back to us from the state as a part of the state funding process. All right, if there's no further questions, I think we can move on, and Chris?
For next week's discussion to the full board, we'll get more detail of, like, the breakdown of everything. Because I know that we've, in the facilities committee, we've been discussing about the bleachers and all of that at the high school, so more detail.
Okay.
So that, I believe the last time there was a discussion to the full board, there was still some questions. there was still some questions, some more specific questions. So to narrow it down.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next item is a monthly status report. Travis Randall? At least on our, this screen here, we weren't able to see the presentation. I don't know if there's anything we can do to. There we go. Thank you. Yep. Thank you for some.
Excellent. Thank you. So again, so I'm Travis Randall, I'm a project manager for campus construction management. And I'm going to provide an update on the active phases, phases of construction that we have going on right now. The first slide at the top, I've included a couple of photos. These are the structural steel for the additions at the high school STEM. The high school STEM wing, these photos are a couple of days old now.
Are you able to move it to the next one?
Oh yeah, you'll need to shorten. Well, am I able to? Let's see. Yeah, looks like it. Okay. Great. So as I, as I alluded, we have several phases of construction ongoing. I'll just kind of go down the list here. So phase two is primarily complete, the process. Some contractors have been closed out, others still have not. Very recently electrical and general contractors completed a punch list at Boynton, DeWitt and South Hill. While some of that work is just awaiting a final inspection. Also included in phase two, some, we added some work for a boiler that had, a backup boiler that had failed at Bell Sherman. That boiler is currently still disconnected. It's awaiting some additional parts to the, to the flue that were needed to be added in order to make the boiler function properly. So we're waiting for those parts so that we can, so that we can do a startup for that boiler and have it, you know, work reliably. Also, we have testing, adjusting, balancing of mechanical equipment has been ongoing at Enfield Elementary School. There's, we're still trying to iron out a couple of rooms with some slight deviations. Are we, we on the same slide or?
I'm not seeing the slides change on the tablet. Is it just the tablet?
It's not. We have to go along with what's in board docs.
Well, I have that. I just want to make sure because I can't see what's on the screen above me. If that's correct, then we're good.
So to, as a, as a method to help us get through the challenges that we're having in TAB, we have a, this mechanical equipment is required to undergo third-party commissioning. So we have not yet completed commissioning of the Enfield mechanical equipment. And we're recommending that we, that we move forward with that commissioning process. And just to kind of elaborate on that, the commissioning is, is just a step towards completion. It doesn't mean the work is complete. Often commissioning identifies shortcomings in the system, a piece of equipment not, you know, functioning just as specified. So then we can, then we can address that as they come up. That's kind of what we have remaining on phase two. The, the list is kind of dwindling there. Phase three A1, which was identified as the Enfield roof replacement is complete. That contract has been closed out. As has the Fall Creek Emergency Repairs Project is now closed out. We had this summer, Enfield Elementary School domestic water upgrades on the, on the domestic well water system. That work is now complete. The equipment's operational. The work was inspected just last week. And the only remaining thing that we have to do is tomorrow, owner training is being conducted. Next we have, I, I kind of jump around a little bit so that I keep an entire slide just for 3B1. But phase 3B2 is our next phase two bid. That's Fall Creek Elementary School Playground, some lighting upgrades to the cafeteria, BJM, lighting upgrades to the cafeteria. And high school, more mechanical equipment replacements, also site work along Lake, Lake Road at the, the bus loop and kind of area cake parking. That's planning to go to bid in October. We're still on track for that. So our, our largest active phase of construction, 3B1. Beverly J. Martin Elementary School, there's a few minor punchless items that, that general contractor is working on. Boynton Kitchen. We installed a new hood, floor trough. That works complete. All works ready for final inspections there at Boynton. At El, Enfield Elementary School, we, there was a, quite a lot of abatement work that happened there this summer as well as toilet room renovations. Toilet renov, room renovations are nearly complete. There was a very tight schedule for the contractors to meet and they've been quite successful at the toilet rooms. The exterior facade and canopy work was delayed because abatement took much longer than scheduled. So the, the entry walkways at Enfield are going to be completed by the end of next week. But the, the facade, which is really just an aesthetic, the, the building envelope is, is complete, you know, it's, it's still there. The facade panels and the aesthetic new canopies, that work is going to remain ongoing after students return. So it's, it's exterior work and we believe it won't be disruptive to teaching and learning. And/or some of it will be done off hours. So that's Enfield at the high school. As you saw in the photos on the first slide, we have structural steel roof and roof decking is nearing completion. Also at the STEM area, we have ceiling installations are ongoing, corridor wall tiles are ongoing. Doors and hardware in the renovation spaces are being installed so that they're ready for egress paths for the start of school. Also in area H, all the mechanical equipment throughout area H has been replaced. That works all now installed. There's some minor kind of access panels, touch-up painting for wall chases and a little bit of ceiling work that is remaining in area H still. Area G. All classroom mechanical units are installed. There's some interior offices. Just yesterday, when I, when, when I was preparing this slide, I actually have a little bit more of an update today. This, this slide says that there may be some spaces unavailable for the start of school offices where I'm thinking that's not going to be the case. We're pushing hard to have all those spaces ready for occupancy. There will be some spaces in area G that, that do have some work remaining. However, but the, the spaces will be occupiable. They'll, they'll be basically done. There'll just be some minor work remaining to be done off hours for those spaces. Any, any questions on the active?
Well, thank you very much Travis. I, I do hope that if there are any spaces that are not available, that it will be communicated, especially as our staff returns to school, that we don't have too many surprises. And if people are interested in seeing the picture that Travis had at the first page about the steel framing that's up, and when you go out of the parking lot, if you're going to the left on Lake Street, you'll see it on the left-hand side. And that's part of the extension to the STEM building.
Yep, that's right. Thanks Ken. Yeah, we, we're meeting with high school leadership, Karen, Scott Bregel. Every week we have a standing meeting, but we, we also talk to them daily to keep them up to date on the status of, of each room as it progresses. So construction, our construction window is always very tight in the summer. We always have a tremendous amount to do. They're down to the wire. Every year we, we, we take on as much construction as we're able. And so that it's always tight at the end and now we're near the end and as always it's tight, but I think we're making good progress.
And, and this is for the community to know from which capital project, what year?
This is, yeah, all this that, that's being presented, this was still from the 2019 referendum. Yeah.
So just for the community to know that things take time and of course, after 2019, we had COVID. So bidding and everything was slow go around that time. And I know that some Enfield staff may feel concerned because they've had, they will have fatigue of all of the construction that's been happening over the years. But the good thing is that we have an energized new principal at Enfield, ready to just welcome all questions that you may have about it and has been updated and continues to be updated. So that we just ask people to continue to forejoin with us in this process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karen, you're going to have to help me. I, Climate Action 4.4, since I'm new to facilities, there was no documentation included?
We can get additional documentation. The sustainability advocates had presented back in, Todd, back in probably around anywhere from April or May, facilities committee meetings, they presented a climate action plan. And we had requested that administration be involved in the whole process as well as we as a facilities committee at that point said that it should be an advisory council that be formed. So we can present it, we can get this, I don't think they're back to work as of yet, the sustainability advocates to just come to the board or, or for us to get word in to present that advisory council, not a, not a committee, but an advisory council, which will include staff. Dan Bryman being one of them, the, some of the sustainability advocates and board members who would like to participate on that advisory council to go through this climate action plan to make sure it's in alignment with what we're doing across the district with multiple improvements that we have, like what the capital project that we have in the end of this year. Because there were some things that we did question as a facilities committee, like electric lawnmowers, things like that. So.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm looking at 604. We, I believe have 26 minutes left. And we have a lot of items in section five and then, you know, pretty important discussion in section six. Could I ask Dom and Emily to come up and maybe, given the sort of tight timeline we have, quickly move us through section five and then maybe just go straight into section six? That's okay with colleagues?
And, and while they're coming up, just knowing that this is the, we're combining two committees and we were hopeful that we would have an efficient meeting to make it an hour and a half, but it we may need to extend in the future to two hours, but we do have a special voting meeting at 6:35. So we have to promptly end at six. I mean, special voting meeting at 6:30. So we have to promptly end at that time.
And actually I should just note as a way of wayfinding, we've now moved from facilities to finance.
Consideration of accounts?
Please.
Okay. Treasurers reports, we, I'm, I'm Emily Shipe and I work in the business office. And the treasurer's report is for May and June. We are entering into our financial audit on Monday. So it's basically end of year, not really much to tell. We will have more to report after the audit is finalized. It's just the cash. And of course, as we get into the summer, cash always goes low. Then we also have the food service, profit and loss again. We are in much better shape at the end of this year with our food service and, and I think it was around, I don't have it right here in front of me, but I think it was around four, 500,000, 600,000 deficit last year and we're at 86, 86K this year. So making improvements, a lot of things that we're doing there. Again, we'll have a better report after the audit findings at the, after next week and probably towards the end of September. Transfers, these are the final transfers for 24, 25. There are no transfers for 25, 26 that exceed the $10,000 mark. So it's a lot of housekeeping transfers that we do at the end of the year, moving textbook money around to make sure all those lines are in balance. A few more payroll changes, contractual, I've grouped them out to each of the different categories to make it easy on you for you to look at those. But that brings our budget, every line is, is in a positive state at this point as we enter into our audit. We have tuition rates. This is just kind of a, a housekeeping thing. Every year districts must establish tuition rates. We typically take our prior year actual rates and that's what we apply to this year. Our actual rates, we don't find the rates out until March, I believe, the actual rates for the year. So standard practice to do that instead of going with estimated rates. Well, let's see, let me fly through this. The other things were bidding, cooperative bidding. So we, every year, we do approve our participation in cooperative bidding in our reorg meeting, but the BOSIs that we belong to do require us to complete these resolutions that we return to them. So for the DCMO participation in their bidding, this is just standard resolution saying, yes, we're going to participate. Yes, we're going to follow all those recommendations based on the committees after they do the bidding process. The other one is the GST BOSIs and this is actually the authorization for them to award the milk, I believe it is, the milk, the ice cream, the bread and the paper bid. They all get bid out at different times as we proceed throughout the summer. So the latest one was the paper bid. We were able to add that on. And again, it's just the consent of the board that go forward GST. We like your bids and we like the process. Then we also have our salt and de-icing crystals and our pizza, pizza bid, which we corrected earlier. And I don't have that one in front of me. So that is just, we did a private bid within the district for our annual purchasing of the salt and de-icing crystals for hopefully not too bad of a winter up ahead. And then our pizza and crust bid for our food service department. So those we are asking for recommendations and we followed all the bidding process and, and it's our recommendation to authorize the two that are, I think it's for salt and de-icing is the Amrex and Papa John's is for the pizza. And I think I've flown through everything I have and I did pretty good. Not normal for me.
With regard to the pizza bid, so we went out to this looks like probably about 15 pizza places within the area and only two came back to us. That's a good thing to note. Interesting, not good.
Is there a call to the Ithaca Pizza community to, we rise up a little more next year?
I think this has happened previously too.
Yes, last year with the same thing. Yeah, we just get the two.
Papa John's bids.
That's the first time I've heard a humorous dough joke, right? Perfect. Fantastic. Thank you. So first let me start by introducing myself. This is really.
Trish was trying now, it's, I, I have, we all have the presentation, it's hard to know.
Oh, sure, sure.
We have it set up now? Advance the slide. No, it doesn't work. Why don't you get started?
I can do that, sure.
Help you to try to get it to sync.
Yeah.
You know?
Sure. Given that we're in the beginning of the process, I just thought I would introduce myself and Emily Shipe. I, uh, Dom Leecey, I'm the, uh, assistant superintendent for business and finance and Emily Shipe, our business manager. We represent a wonderful group of folks in the business office and, uh, and we're sort of excited to get the year started. It's my understanding, uh, as you know, I started last in, in January of last year in the middle of the budget process. But it's my understanding, this presentation's been given pretty much on a yearly basis. It's essentially a one-on-one of the budget process and, and this is really sort of the beginning of that. So, and given the time constraints, I'm going to consolidate a little bit because we're going to dig into this a lot more as the year progresses. At least I can follow it, right, right, right. I'm going to start with the what, what is a budget? I know it's, it sounds basic, but really it's, it's an illustration of sort of the changes and prioritization and the goal setting from year to year. Uh, it, it, and what's really important is it's essentially an estimate of what we anticipate the expenses to be in the subsequent year.
Yes.
Ah, here we go.
Do you guys have it?
It's, it's getting there.
Okay.
And really the best way to express that, thank you so much, is it's a representation of what's occurred in the past, sort of where we are in the present. And looking, sort of visualizing where we, where we might be in terms of that estimate for the future. The process itself, uh, takes place over the next several months. Uh, and during that time, we work with various stakeholders, including the board of education, the finance committee, our building leaders, uh, and so on. Just to start to calculate that, that estimate. Just to give you a sense of the timeline. Our fiscal year is between July first and June thirtieth. The budget development process takes place from December to April. And I'm often asked by folks, you know, when does your, your budget, budget season begin? It really never ends for us, but practically speaking for the board and for the community, it's December through April. In April, it culminates in the board of education adopting a budget that we, that we, uh, share. And in May, the public will vote whether or not to approve that budget. And also at that time, we have board of education elections. Currently, we're in the process of analyzing the expenditures of the budget that was passed in May of twenty twenty-four. That being of course fiscal year twenty twenty-five. That analysis results in a series of various reports, expense reports that are vetted by, uh, our auditors, which we then report to the state. And that information is then posted on our website. We compare our estimates of our expenses, uh, from what was actually expended. And that kind of allows us, uh, to, uh, prepare and plan for the upcoming budget. Uh, we also have a period where we examine funds that were set aside, uh, for anticipated expenditures. We refer to those as encumbrances, uh, and we reconcile those funds with, uh, with the bills that may be outstanding or projects that go from year to year. We also have an audit committee that's, uh, uh, separate from the finance committee. And that audit committee also serves as an accountability factor for the purpose of reviewing, uh, our expenditures. So one of the questions that's sort of critical in the process is where does our revenue come from? Uh, our revenue, first and foremost, the bulk of our revenue comes from the local tax share. Uh, almost sixty-eight percent in the fiscal, yeah, I keep forgetting that it's different here than up there. Let's see. We're frozen? It's not behaving, that's, I can talk through it. So about sixty-eight percent of our total revenue comes from the local tax share, homeowners and renters. And for fiscal year twenty-six, we know. Sure. That, uh, about twenty-seven, or sorry, twenty-two percent, twenty-two to twenty-three percent of that. Yeah, of our revenue will be from state aid. Uh, we have other miscellaneous revenue, about four percent of that comes from our interests and our pilots, uh, and tuition. Although not, not very much actually comes from tuition and the remaining balance is from our fund balance and reserves. Now, and we're going to talk a little bit more about fund balance and reserves. We do that throughout the process quite a bit. Um, so I may just, uh, bypass that for this evening, but again, we'll be sharing a great deal more of that information as, as, uh, as time moves on through the budget process. Didn't want to show. I think we're going to be able to do that unfortunately. One of the things important is how our, our budget is allocated, how it's expended. And so we had this great chart that we can't show you this evening, but we'll share that again throughout, uh, the next several months. But our expenses, just to, to, uh, give you a sense of what that looks like, about seventy percent of our overall expenditures are salaries and benefits. And that's sort of important to share. The, the remaining thirty percent of that is BOSIs, it's, uh, our debt payments, our contractual obligations, uh, and items such as equipment and supplies. And I'm going to let Emily share with you our various funds, uh, and, and what those actually mean and how we, how we, uh, manage those.
Okay, the general fund is what the taxpayers, um, vote on every year in May. Um, and that is the bulk of what we do as a school district. Um, then we have, uh, funds, uh, for school lunch is what we refer to as the C fund. And I, I'm using the letters because it is part of the budget code. So when you see it beginning with an A, you know, it's general fund. Um, C fund is school lunch. We have special aid fund, those are the grants that we get in. Um, and off the top of my head, I don't have it written down, but I think that equates to around five million. Um, maybe a little over five million in grants that we have right now. There's never any guarantee of what we're going to get in those grants, but it is money that we get in, um, that supports us. There's the dollar. We can go back to, um, H fund is our capital fund. So that is money that is, um, as they spoke earlier in the facilities meeting. That goes towards keeping our buildings and our, um, facilities up to speed. And, um, it is also, uh, we get fifty-eight percent back on every dollar, fifty-eight cents on every dollar back for every dollar we spend. As long as it's adable under the capital projects. We have a CM fund, which is our trust. Those are our awards that we do at the end of the year and anything that, um, is donated for a specific purpose. We have some trusts that, uh, benefit, uh, medical needs of some of our students, um, some, um, uh, clothing needs. And then mostly the graduation awards. Uh, we do have one that supports our libraries and those all, uh, are in the trust. We have our CS risk assessment, that's our health benefits, um, program that we are self-funded. So we have that separated out. And then we also have, uh, money that is set aside debt service and that helps pay back debt. That we've incurred through our capital projects. And as we go forward into the more in the budget process, we'll kind of deep dive into what, how the budget codes are broken down into the programs and the functions. And how we have to report at a state level.
So we're also going to share, uh, our IT department and communications department do an awful lot of work in preparing the information and making sure that it's posted and available publicly. So we're going to show on our website, uh, where this information can be found. Cause I think one of the most important purposes of not only this committee, but the work that we're doing in terms of the budget is making sure that the public can see it, review it. It's an accountability factor for us as well. So on our website, under about us, you'll see the section under budget development. If you can go to the next slide. And on that particular page, you'll see all of the information that we shared during this process, uh, so that that can be, uh, reviewed at your leisure, including the videos and so on. Thanks and thanks. Okay. Aside from the reserves, that's what we have. Do we want to go back? We can go back to that section if you'd like and talk about the reserves if we have time.
Very good.
Okay, we can do that, sure. So when we talk about our revenue, one of the areas that we, uh, we sort of delve into quite a bit during the process is our reserves and fund balance. We have a number of reserves that are essentially referred to as set asides, such as our insurance liability, our healthcare, retirement. We also have the capital reserve, we just had that discussion regarding our capital projects, which helps us fund those particular, uh, aspects of, uh, the district, uh, finances. Our, um, those are, those are referred to as our reserve fund balance, those set asides. And those are set aside for very specific purposes. Our unreserved fund balance is composed of our unappropriate fund balance, best identified as essentially like a rainy day fund. Uh, for lack of a better, uh, of a better term. And the reason why that's important, uh, just to share some information with you that we received from the state comptroller and the division of budget. Was that in their most recent analysis, they're looking at almost a seven point five billion dollar gap in the state budget within two years, two fiscal years. So that rainy day fund in the reserves helps us prepare for that. Because in the past, we've seen where that's actually, uh, been detrimental to, uh, school district budgets. So that rainy day fund can help us through those difficult times. So that's an important aspect of our reserves and fund balance. Also, we have our appropriated fund balance. These are funds that we set aside to offset the upcoming year's budget. It's important to note that, uh, we may not expend those funds, we don't always expend those funds. But having a healthy appropriated fund balance does play into our, and is an important aspect of our financial health when it comes to our bond rating. And I know we just talked about the capital projects and how we bond for those and receive aid. That bond rating allows us to have a much lower interest rate when we go out for that purpose and that's a critical factor. We've asked that, uh, fiscal advisors, uh, present to the board of education at our next meeting and they'll talk a little bit more about that whole process. Uh, so that we can have, um, a clear understanding of what that looks like.
Dom, could you?
Sure.
Just i- in rough terms, put an order of magnitude on what is our exposure to this uncertainty from Albany? Kind of like what share of our pie is, is potentially at risk here?
Sure, I, you know, we receive about twenty-three percent of our, of our revenue through state aid. It, it would be difficult to make a direct correlation to that gap, but in the past, we've seen where, where the state, when they've, when they've experienced a gap, that it has had a direct impact on school districts aid. So, um, it would be hard to come up with a number for us, but it could have an impact. And so being prepared with our reserves is, is critical.
So potentially twenty-three percent of our revenue has some degree, we don't know how much yet.
Absolutely.
Vulnerability that we have to prepare for.
Correct. And we're also looking at the uncertainty from, um, federal funding. Uh, you know, we receive between five and six million dollars a year from the federal government in terms of, uh, grants and so on, so.
So state is twenty-three percent. I guess five million and one sixty is what, two, two, you know, another two, three percent from federal. And so all of that is.
That's right.
At some degree of risk.
That's correct. So, you know, uh, when we talk about our reserves. Our reserves are healthy. We're in great shape. Uh, I think, um, the, uh, the work that we've done to get there is exceptional. But as we know, there are peaks and valleys in, in school district budgeting. So being prepared for that is, is, uh, is a good move on our part.
From what I'm hearing, this is a good time to have a healthy.
Correct.
Fund balance and healthy reserve fund.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And with that, if there's questions, we'll be happy to, uh, attend to those.
Well, um, with the pie chart of the allocation, if we could also include percentage next to the amount, but some people, I know I would welcome that.
Absolutely.
And, um, in the revenue section, and you'd stated other miscellaneous, that tuition, although that's listed here, but not really.
Yeah.
So, um.
Sure.
Cause it, cause it just seems like that top three and people are going to start asking, what do we charge them?
Right.
Absolutely. So we do have a, uh, a tuition fee that we allocate. Would probably be better to explain this, but we do have a, a certain amount that we are supposed to charge for tuition for out of district.
Right.
We don't have a lot of students that fit that, so that's why it's not a large number for us. But we put it up there in case that is, it's something that we should explain because it's a, there's potential for that. So we also receive funds from Cornell, uh, to offset some of this, but it's part of that other.
And, and thank you for, um, um, showing in this presentation where the community can find the budget development information and all. It would be good to put budget in one-on-one up there.
Sure.
Also to make, um, lives easier, as well as to always inform people that the budgeting process, as you stated, is all year round. It does not occur April.
Right.
For a May vote, but year-long process, so thank you very much.
Sure, my pleasure.
Yeah, just, I mean, actually, uh, maybe just to put on the record, because we're talking about a, a capital campaign, uh, for a vote in December. The amount of money that we pay on debt services, set at, was it seven?
Seven percent.
Seven percent, right.
Correct.
So when we look at our expenditures, that, that line item is always going to be at or around or below.
Seven. Correct, that's right.
And that's true whether or not we pass the.
Yeah.
Well, or to approximate, right? If we were to pass the capital improvement, whether, if that vote were to be yes.
Yes.
We would still cap that at seven percent.
Correct.
Correct.
It's important to illustrate that. So I, I, because with this coming up, I, there's, there may be some misinformation about how that works. So I think we're looking at forty-two or forty-three million dollars. I knew you'd have it too. Forty-three point nine million for the capital project. I think when we go out to vote, a lot of times folks think that we're asking for that money upfront. Now, taxpayers pay that, those funds in one way, shape or form, whether it's local tax funds or to the state and it comes back to us. But, uh, we actually go and we bond for that amount. So it's essentially a loan that we receive. And that's why I mentioned that our bond rating is so important because the interest rate is, is directly correlates to how healthy our fund balance and reserve is. So, uh, we want a strong bond rating when we go out for those loans. Then we receive fifty-eight cents on the dollar back in aid as we complete those building projects or those projects that are under the capital project. So that debt limit that we have, that seven percent is something that we plan in our budget every year. So seven percent of our budget are those payments that are allocated to that. And then we receive the aid back on those payments to that, to that fifty-eight cents on the dollar amount.
So in that sense, we're disciplined that we have a hard cap on.
Correct.
The amount of our expenditures that would go to debt service.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The other?
No. We did good.
There's a board, uh. It's six twenty-seven, uh, we call like three minute, uh, short recess and then we'll resume as a full board.
We did good time.